Good evening. My name is Dharma Ackerman and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of the Ann Arbor area. I welcome you to tonight's forum featuring candidates for the Ann Arbor City Council. The candidates will be on the ballot in the primary election on Tuesday, August 8th. We are broadcasting this evening from the studios of CTN in Ann Arbor. The League of Women Voters is pleased to be sponsoring these forums. The League is a nonpartisan grassroots organization that does not support candidates or parties, but we do take stands on issues that we've studied. One of the League's important goals is to assist voters in making informed choices at the polls, and thus we bring you tonight's program. Volunteers from the League of Women Voters are facilitating tonight's forum. Our moderator this evening is Gillian Gainesley, who will explain the process from here.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's forum. Our two candidates tonight, Zachary Ackerman and Stephen Kuncelman, are running for -- to represent Ward Three in Ann Arbor City Council. Each candidate will have a one-minute opening statement, followed by 90-second responses to each of our questions, and then a two-minute closing statement from each candidate. We have determined beforehand that Mr. Ackerman will be going first for both the opening and closing statements, and then we'll alternate which candidate goes first through the questions. In addition, we would like to thank all of the people from the Ann Arbor voters who submitted questions for tonight's forum. Both of the forums, the League of Women Voters received 88 questions from voters on issues that they were interested in hearing about. We'd like to thank CTN, the CivCity Initiative, and a group of Ann Arbor Pioneer High School students, all of whom helped spread the word, collect questions, and determine the questions that would be used. We have several that are specific to Ward Three tonight. So we will be getting started, and we'll start tonight with an opening statement for Mr. Ackerman.
Thanks so much. And first, thank you to the hosts for having us. This is an awesome opportunity to talk about the issues that matter to Third Ward residents and for giving us that platform. I think we're both grateful. Like it was said, I'm Zach Ackerman. I'm a Democratic Representative for the Third Ward on Ann Arbor City Council, and I'm here tonight to ask for your support once again as I run for reelection. If you don't know, I grew up right here in Ann Arbor and in the Third Ward specifically, and I'm a proud graduate of the University of Michigan and the Ann Arbor Public Schools. Two years ago, I asked for your support based on a fairly simple premise: The conversations and decisions being made in those next two years would impact the direction of our community for the next one year or more. I can say that over these past two years, we've had conversations and made decisions around our infrastructure, our basic services, around the affordability of our housing market, and actions that push a progressive direction for our community on the environment, transit, and a vibrant downtown. So, over the last two years, I was excited to give you responsive representation, and I ask for that opportunity again. While we're here tonight and we'll talk about the details of our policies, you can visit my website, ackermanforcouncil.com, to find my direct contact info. I'd love to sit down one-on-one and hear your thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Kuncelman, your opening statement.
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this debate. And thank you to Mr. Ackerman for participating in this democratic electoral effort. I am Stephen Kuncelman, and I am a Democratic candidate seeking an election to represent the residents of Ward Three on Ann Arbor City Council. I'm asking for you to vote, "Councilman for Council," this August 8th in the Democratic primary election. I'm asking for your vote, as I believe that with my education, my governmental experience, and my passion and commitment for my hometown of Ann Arbor, that I offer a perspective and ability for effective representation and advocacy on behalf of all Ward Three residents at city council deliberations. I'm honored to participate in this competitive electoral endeavor, as I believe democracy requires competition to keep our elected officials honest, open, and transparent. Having previously served four terms on city council, I am proud of the honesty, integrity, transparency, and fiduciary responsibility that I brought to our city government. And if elected, I will continue to focus on the public health, safety, and welfare of our community. Thank you, and I ask for your vote this August 8th to elect "Councilman for Council."
Thank you. We'll begin with a question, and Mr. Kuncelman will start off. Ward Three represents a broad range of socioeconomic diversity. It tends to be represented by more affluent residents from the Burns Park area, which is closer to the city's core. As a council member, how would you ensure that the needs of residents on the southeast side of town are represented?
Well, that's a great question, because I live on the east side of town, and we actually call it East Ann Arbor. It historically was its own village. And I have lived in East Ann Arbor since about 2001, but I -- my grandparents raised my mother and her eight brothers and sisters. They were founding members of St. Francis Catholic Church over on Stadium, also in Ward Three. To represent all Ward Three residents requires engaging every resident in conversations and talking about their needs and their wants in terms of what city government can provide for them. Over the years, in my previous service on city council, I attended meetings, I go to places where the voters are, and not expect them to come to me. I think it's important that I listen, and I think it's important that we understand that there is truly economic diversity in Ward Three. We look at the elementary schools and the high proportion of free lunch of the students that attend Mitchell and Pittsfield and Allen. And I think it's important that we provide city services equally to everyone, regardless of whether they're in Burns Park, Forest Brook, or Arbor Oaks. It's important, and I will continue to do so if I'm elected.
Thank you. Mr. Ackerman, how would you ensure that the needs of residents on the southeast side of Ann Arbor are represented?
Thanks so much. So I would start by pointing out, I'm the only member of city council who rents their housing. I'm young, and that's not a surprise to too many people, but that also means that I'm not affluent. As we talk about the decisions that we need to make at the council table and how we represent the ward as a whole, I think my colleague, Mr. Kuncelman, is exactly right, and it requires an energetic representation, a representation that goes to you. Because so often, when you talk to the voters and run a grassroots campaign like I am, you hear what's actually on their mind, and so often, it's what's at the end of their driveway, not necessarily what's happening from 50,000 feet downtown. We need to deliver consistent trash pickup and recycling pickup. We need to fill people's potholes on their streets within 72 hours. These are all things that we've strived to do. In terms of specific successes on the south side, I'd like to point out securing $300,000 of funding to build a sidewalk gap on Ellsworth to make sure people can get to their bus station safely. I'd also like to point out fully funding and supporting the expansion of the Bright Community Center from one buildings to two buildings, and helping our Parks Department deliver that funding through a federal grant as well as a local match. These are tangible things that we can do to better the lives of our residents and better their quality of life, from providing them a safe opportunity to take public transit to having the opportunity to meet as a community in a safe and spacious venue. Then there are other ways that we can do it, and we'll talk about those. I imagine affordable housing will come up at some point, or at least I hope it will, because we need to provide housing for all of our people.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. And you'll be kicking us off on the next question. Would you consider eliminating a current tax or decreasing a millage rate for any of the taxes that residents currently pay? If so, which taxes do you think could be lowered or eliminated?
Thanks for the question. Challenging ourselves on the fiscal state of our local government is always an important conversation. I don't believe so. I think we have a healthy tax rate, and I think it needs to stay where it is. And that's represented by the fact that every single year, our recurring costs increase at a faster rate than our recurring revenue. And while I don't believe in expanding taxes, I believe that we can make up that gap by expanding our tax base. In 2008, when we went through the Great Recession, and we lost 5% of our tax roll to Pfizer cell to the University of Michigan, we got hit, and we had to downsize our city government by a lot, and people saw a hit to their quality of service. I think that the millage rate we have right now is sufficient to get us through, but there are ways that we need to figure out how to be more efficient in terms of our recycling program, in terms of the way that we implement our police force to enforce traffic safety, make sure that kids are safe when they're getting to schools. And also, I mean, let's face it, when you build a new building, and that building is paying $2 million a year into the tax funds and doesn't use more infrastructure or more basic service cost than a single-family house, that's a win to the residents who've been paying taxes here for the last 20 years.
Thank you. Mr. Kuncelman, would you consider eliminating a current tax or decreasing millage rate for any of our taxes that residents currently pay? If so, which taxes do you think could be lowered or eliminated?
Well, when I was on council back in 2006, one of the fees that got raised on our tax bill was the administration fee, and I do believe that we can reduce that. I think we're charged -- it was charged to support the clerk's office, but we no longer have a shortage of money. I understand that everybody keeps talking about needing more revenue, but that's not really so much as -- we are the wealthiest tax base of a city in the state of Michigan, so the idea that we need to keep adding more revenues, I think, is not the right focus. We need to focus our responsibilities on making sure that we take care of the best things or our services that we have. One of the things, again, when I was on council, I led the effort to reduce the DDA's TIF capture, which is a local tax or taxes collected by the DDA. And by doing so, the city and the other taxing authorities began -- received a lot more tax revenues from all the downtown buildings. And I think that that was something that all of council is now generously appreciative of, as these new tax revenues come in, and we should be able to take care of a lot more things that we have not been taking care of. One of the things that I've heard, as I've been going door-to-door, is that we pay a lot in taxes, but we don't receive the high-quality services that we expect. So rather than trying to reduce the taxes, I would rather see our city government doing more to focus on the basic principles of taking care of our roads, taking care of our infrastructure, and making sure that we take care of public health, safety, and welfare. That's the most important thing that we can do with our taxes.
Thank you. Mr. Kuncelman will also start off this next question. The county recently interviewed developers of three different proposals for a piece of property on Platt Road. What do you hope happens to that property? And given that it is in Ward Three, what is the role of a Ward Three council member in this process?
The Platt Road effort by the county is really kind of something that is really difficult for me to understand why they're going in the direction that they're going. I spent 10 years on the Planning Commission of Ann Arbor, two years on the Planning Commission, and eight years on city council, trying to do exactly what the County Commission is trying to do on Platt Road, and that is leverage a piece of land to encourage some sort of affordable housing. We did that with the Y Lot. 10 years of effort, went nowhere. And the reason is, is that politicians do not have the wherewithal to engage in speculative real estate development, and that's what the county is doing. They are attempting to use their 13 acres to turn around and engage in speculative real estate development. We've seen Ypsilanti try to engage in speculative real estate with Water Street. It failed. We saw Sylvan Township engage in speculative real estate with a developer. They had to raise their millage by four mills in order to pay off the monies that they borrowed for the infrastructure. So I'm actually very disappointed in the methodology that the county is trying to use to, quote, "do affordable housing," because really what they're saying is, if we do a lot of luxury housing, we'll get some affordable housing. And that's the premise that we keep hearing time, time, and again from these politicians who are engaged in affordable housing. They keep telling us, if we build more affordable or more luxury housing, we'll get affordable housing. This trickle-down housing policy does not work, and we need to do more to actually support our Ann Arbor Housing Commission. While Platt Road sits there vacant, the Ann Arbor Housing Commission down on Platt Road has vacant pieces of buildings waiting for funding to be demolished and redeveloped.
Thank you. Mr. Ackerman, we'll have the same question in relation to the Platt Road proposal for the Washtenaw County. What do you hope happens to this property? And given that it is in Ward Three, what is the role of a Ward Three council member in this process?
Thanks so much for the question. How you use a piece of public land is always a hot debate and of much interest to the people. The Platt Road property is 13 acres that sits at the corner, if you're on Parkway and Platt Road, next to County Farm Park. It used to be the juvenile detention center before that was torn down just over a decade ago. These 13 acres are a prime location for development of any kind, but it's important that we see affordable housing, a diverse mix of housing there. It's easy access to transit right along Washtenaw and our major corridor to Ypsilanti. It's also walkable to commerce and to parks and to schools. It is where anyone would like to live, and I would like to see as much of a diverse community there as possible. The only way that you do that is with a government stake in that land. And Mr. Kuncelman is right, politicians aren't the right people to do development. And while this isn't speculative, because we have the demand to prove that people will live here, he's right, and we need to find a development partner, or rather, the county does. Right now, it's in their hands. I have a personal favorite. I love the Veridian Development. It brings sustainability in a way that no development in the state of Michigan ever has. We're talking a net neutral neighborhood in terms of energy consumption, but we're also talking about a neighborhood that uses, that leverages homes for sale to pay for the utility costs of low-income families living right there in the same community. It incorporates a lot of the community gardens that we're already seeing prop up in the field, and it continues a legacy of us trying to champion and lead in terms of sustainability and inclusivity.
For our next question, Mr. Ackerman will be starting us off. In 2015, the Ann Arbor Human Rights Commission recommended the establishment of an independent civilian police review board. The city has hired a law enforcement consulting firm to audit police community relations. What features of a civilian oversight board do you think are critical for effectiveness, and which would you support as a council member?
Thanks so much. When I took office, nothing was more important to me than observing our public safety departments firsthand, which is why the first thing I did before I even took office was did ride-alongs with our police and fire departments. We spend 47% of our general fund budget on police, fire, and our courts, the things that make up public safety, and police is the largest chunk of those. When I did my ride-along, I saw an incredibly professional police force that handled three potentially violent situations in a way that respected and gave safety to the people involved. That said, when you're talking about civilians who are handed guns and given the responsibility to protect the rest of us, there has to be an added layer of civilian oversight. And so depending on the recommendations that come out of our independent audit, I'd be interested in moving forward in that direction. And while I have a kind of preconceived bias towards it, I do want to wait for the expert's advice, and have been proactively meeting with members of the Human Rights Commission, members of the NAACP, as well as folks from the Bryant Community Center, Northside Community Centers, to get a sense of where they think this consulting mission is going and where they see the end result needing to be. I'll leave it there, and like I said, I'm excited to continue the conversation, and I believe our police force has a large share of our budget, but also the people who keep us safe and, you know, have life and death in their hands, need another layer of oversight.
Thank you. Mr. Kuncelman will have the same question. What features of a civilian oversight board do you think are critical for effectiveness, and which would you support as a council member?
Okay. Well, and I also agree with my colleague here, Mr. Ackerman, that our police force is very highly professional and have done a great job for our community. I was on council when some of these issues were coming up, in the expectation that we would respond to the unfortunate death of R. Rossar by the hands of one of our police officers. And I understand that there's a great cry for some sort of oversight review board. Having said that, as this process moves forward, I think one thing that I will for surely say is that we will never, I will never support giving a police oversight board the authority to hire or fire our police officers and within our police department. We cannot have that kind of level of politic engaged in a professional police force. We have a similar, we have a model that we can probably look to, and that is the University of Michigan's has a police oversight board that's actually set up through the enabling legislation at the state level. And we need to have a, there actually are elected people within that oversight board that give great diversity and engagement to all stakeholders involved across the campus. And we need something very similar for our oversight board, whether or not it's broken up by wards, or by neighborhoods, or by profession, by diversity, by socioeconomics, whatever it is, we need a great diversity within this police oversight, civilian oversight board, so that everybody can feel comfortable and confident and trusting of this endeavor.
Thank you. Mr. Kuncelman will start for question number five. What is your view about the right locations and cost-effective usage of Ann Arbor fire stations and fire department assets, including the decommissioned station number two, which houses the Fire Prevention Bureau?
Again, this was an issue that I had quite some engagement with when I served previously on city council, and there was actually an attempt, a few years back, to close some fire stations, particularly the one in Ward Three over on, here on Parkway. And I fought that, and I believe that where we are today with our fire department is good. It's sufficient, and it's relatively cost-effective. So I will always work to maintain our existing fire stations. The fire station over on Stadium, near Packard, has been closed for many years, and it seems to have shown that it's not as necessary, which it might be desirable to open it up someday, but with a lot of the changes and the improvements in building codes, that's one of the things that we've understood over the years, that we have actually less fires and demand for our fire services. What we do have, though, is a need for medical service, and that's where I've made it very clear that we're going to keep open our existing fire stations, because it's that first responder for the heart attack that comes from our fire station that is saving lives. And these are the kind of things that I've heard from residents that I've talked to over the years, and it's something that I know is very dear to them. Again, we pay very high taxes, and these, our residents expect and demand that we will have a fire station and fire service providers, first medics, available to treat their emergency needs.
Thank you. Mr. Ackerman will ask you the same question. What is your view on the right locations and cost-effective usage of Ann Arbor fire stations and fire department assets, including the decommissioned station number two, which houses the Fire Prevention Bureau?
Thank you very much for the question. So many of the questions tonight have been about how do we better use the resources that we already have, so I'm grateful for that theme. When it comes to our fire department, we need to remember that a fire department exists to be the insurance policy you hope to never use. You invest in a fire department and the staffing incorporated in the, with the understanding that should the worst ever happen, they're going to be there to respond. And while we do have fewer fires every year than the year before, there is an added benefit to them being trained medically and responding, along with our police force, to all of the calls that we dispatch our ambulances to. There are better ways and more efficient ways in which we can deliver that service. I had the luxury of doing a ride-along with the fire department on a football Saturday, which is probably the most resource-intensive, you know, eight days of the year. And it was incredible to see the way in which our fire department, police department, and HVA, the Huron Valley Ambulance, worked together to get kids to the hospital when they needed to go to the hospital, from falls to, you know, overconsumption. But there are, again, more efficient ways to do it. Every time they are dispatched on one of these calls, they're taking out a half-million dollars to $1.6 million in equipment, when they could be taking out an SUV filled with the exact same medical equipment at a much lower risk to the taxpayer from a financial standpoint. Again, I don't think me and Mr. Kuncelman disagree very much on this, but looking for ways that we can spend our tax dollars more efficiently to make sure that we deliver the same quality of product, but at lower cost to the resident.
Thank you. This is going to be our final question, and it's a long one, so you might need to bear with me a little bit. And Mr. Ackerman will start out with this question. Recently, city council voted 8-3 to indicate how it would allocate revenue from a possible countywide tax to support public safety and mental health services. It's rare for one local government body to give formal feedback to other local bodies, in this case, before the county board had voted to put a tax on the ballot. Does the city council have a responsibility to develop relationships with other public governing bodies, such as the county, university, library, and schools? And in what ways does this currently happen? Do you think there are better ways to develop those relationships?
Sure, there's a lot in that question. So the county is considering a millage for mental health and safety services. In order to honor the fact that the city of Ann Arbor spends a large amount of its operating budget on police services, they'll be giving a rebate either based on taxable value or population to the residents of Ann Arbor, and that's going to come in somewhere between $2 million and $2.5 million a year as a rebate to our general fund. It's important to note that should this move forward, that rebate isn't going to be taking dollars from mental health funding, but instead, the safety services that we already provide to the Ann Arbor Police Department. Through that, it's important to understand the process. The process is, they're considering a millage, they're considering what a rebate might look like. We interjected and said, yes, a rebate. We don't want to subsidize the police force in the Sheriff's Department operating in Chelsea or Manchester. We want to spend our tax dollars on public safety here in Ann Arbor, and if people are going to be paying taxes, they want to see the benefit of those services here. So we're advocating for the rebate. From there, I think it's legitimate for Ann Arbor voters to know what they'll be voting on, because that $2 to $2.5 million rebate is going to become real service eventually. So we said, what are the priorities that the community has that are being underfunded? Climate change, in a time when our president doesn't believe in science. Affordable housing, when the Housing and Urban Development Department is seeing significant slashes. And finally, pedestrian safety, when you have kids walking to school in unsafe conditions. Finally, it'll be up to the voters to decide whether or not they're going to tax themselves.
Thank you. Mr. Kuncelman, I'll give you an abbreviated version of the same question. The first part is that the city council voted 8-3 to allocating a revenue from a possible countywide tax for public health and safety services. Does the city council have a responsibility to develop relationships with other governing bodies? And in what ways does this currently happen, and how could we improve that process?
All right. Well, first of all, regarding this 8-3 vote, I mean, that was clearly nothing more than political posturing. It's unfortunate that our city council decided that they wanted to impose themselves on a county effort that the county hadn't even put forth the language or adopted the language for this millage. So I won't talk too much about that, but this idea that we're getting a rebate could be very much illegal under state tax law. So it was very premature, it was unnecessary, and it was wrong. In terms of our relationships, yes, it's very important that elected officials have very good relationships with other elected officials in other municipalities. And I think that's really important, because when you do that, you have success in regional efforts. I'll give an example. When I served on city council, we, there was an effort to create the countywide transit authority. I was very much opposed to that. There are many people on the county commission, very many people in the Ann Arbor City Council, were all trying to go to countywide. But I believe that there was a better way, and that way was to expand the Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority. I went out and I met with Ypsilanti Township elected officials. I went out and spoke with the city of Ypsilanti elected officials. I talked to them, what can we do to get your buy-in? And through that effort, we were successful. I led that effort because I worked with other elected officials. I also want to bring up the other one is, Pittsfield Township is very much opposed to the expansion of the Ann Arbor Airport. The supervisor, Mandy Greewall, has made that very clear, yet our city council has not been paying attention to her, and I'm opposed to the expansion of the airport, and I want to work with our neighbors in Pittsfield Township to ensure that we are working together.
Thank you. It was a very quick response as to a very complex question, and I appreciate that from both candidates. We are going to move on to closing statements. Mr. Ackerman will begin, and you have two minutes.
Thanks again for the opportunity to be here. You always host an incredible forum, and thanks to the folks here and watching at home as well, too. My opponent, I appreciate you seeing you here this time around. Again, I'm Zach Ackerman, and I'm a Democratic Representative for the Third Ward on Ann Arbor City Council. And again, I'm asking for your support as I run for reelection. The last two years have been collaborative and productive. We focused our conversations around the basic services and the infrastructure, around affordable housing market, and around progressive action on the environment, transit, and a vibrant downtown. In the last two years, we introduced a new roads plan that's going to reduce the number of potholes and cracks in our roads while maintaining the long-term funding for our 300 miles of roadway. Now we need to make sure that our streets are safe for pedestrians and cyclists. We introduced an urban forestry plan that's going to bring 1,000 new street trees to neighborhoods across Ann Arbor every single year, while making sure we're funding their pruning and maintenance. Now we need to update our outdated stormwater system to make sure that homes are safe in changing environments. And we nearly rehabbed every single unit of our affordable housing system, making sure our most vulnerable neighbors can live safely. Now we need to build new housing for retirees and workers. I'm proud of our successes over the last two years, but they also highlight the reasons that make me say we have more to do. And because I want to represent you, I'm dedicated to approach to leadership that will always seek your guidance. And because I'm dedicated to serving you, I will always strive to make City Hall more accessible, more understandable, and more helpful to you, the resident, because ultimately, that's what we're here to do. So please don't forget to vote Tuesday, August 8th, or by absentee ballot between now and then. I hope I can ask for your support, and I look forward to doing everything I can to earn it. See you on the campaign trail.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. We will move on to a closing statement from Mr. Kuncelman.
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this debate, and thank you, Mr. Ackerman, for your service in public office. I'm honored and privileged to seek the Democratic candidacy to serve the residents of Ward Three on Ann Arbor City Council. It was a recent decision of mine to seek elected office again. After talking with downtown business owners, neighbors, supporters, it became increasingly clear that our city government is going in the wrong direction. Far too often, our elected representatives are dismissive of any alternative views and compromises. Their secretiveness and lack of transparency is especially troubling. Also troubling is the contempt of city council toward downtown business interests who are concerned with the loss of their economic viability due to the city council-approved sale of hundreds of public parking spaces to a private for-profit developer for a 17-story building on the library lot. We need a city council that supports our existing downtown business interests, not one that sells off our federally subsidized public parking spaces to out-of-town for-profit developers. developers in spite of our existing businesses. In addition, the poor leadership of City Council to adequately maintain our recycling program, as illustrated by the closure of the city's material recovery facility, and the subsequent tripling in costs of the recycling program from expensive hauling contracts to ship our unprocessed recyclables out of state is disappointing. As a former driver for recycling Ann Arbor, I will do all I can to restore our recycling program to the operational and financial efficiency it once had. But it was the vote by City Council against releasing the communications between the city and the Federal Railroad Administration regarding the effort to plan for a new train station that was really upsetting to me. A vote that clearly was against the progressive democratic ideals of open and transparent government, for what can possibly be so secretive about a proposed train station location that would lead City Council to vote against the most fundamental value of our community, open and transparent government. Please visit my website at councilmanforcouncil.com, and for more information on my candidacy, again, I am Stephen Councilman, a Democratic candidate for the Ann Arbor City Council, Ward 3, and I'm asking for your vote this August 8th to elect Councilman for Council. Thank you.
Thank you so much to both of our candidates, and thank you for being here and taking the time to do this, and to take the opportunity to reach out to voters. This is an incredible opportunity to hear very briefly about some of these issues, and we encourage voters to continue to do their research and explore both of these candidates and read up on this. Excuse me. So.
Yes, thank you to the candidates for participating in tonight's forum, and to CTN for making this program possible. These forums will be rebroadcast on Channel 19 a number of times between now and the election, and they're also available on-demand, streaming on your computer or smartphone. Just go to our website, lvwannarbor.org, and look for the link to the programs. For additional balanced, nonpartisan information on candidates and ballot issues, go to vot411.org and enter your address. There you will find information on the candidates and the ballot proposals that will appear on your ballot. Be sure to vote on Tuesday, August 8th. Good night.[1750.51][1750.51]